As the chapter 551 open meetings of the Texas Government Code is amended, I call to order a meeting in the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Monday, April the first, 2013, at 6:05 PM. The Board may meet in closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, or assignment duties, discipline and dismissal of a public officer or employee, deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, deliberation of negotiated contract for a prospective gift to the district, deliberation about commercial or financial information that the Board has received from a business prospect, or deliberation of the offer of financial or other incentive to a business prospect, and/or to consult with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or a similar offer, or on a matter which the school district legal counsel determines should be confidential in accordance with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, and 551.071, respectively. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a second. Second by Ms. Hollins. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passed by all present on the dais. At this time, Dr. Mathias, would you lead us in the pledge?
Be happy to. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome to everyone this evening. At this time, we are going to have citizens' communication. This is the time that we dedicate at each regularly scheduled board meeting for public comments. Under the open meetings law and the rules of this Board, there will not be a deliberation between the persons at the microphone and the dais, but we will be taking notes. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period, each speaker will be allotted two minutes with a maximum of 30 speakers allowed. As is the Board's longstanding practice, speakers must have signed up in person and can only sign up for themselves. The Board will not allow substitutions or yielding of time to others. As you come to the microphone, there's a device that will light up as you move through your two minutes of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please take the opportunity to sum up your comments so that we can move on to the next person, and each person who has signed up will have the opportunity to address the Board. If you wish to address the Board this evening but are not called when the maximum is reached, please know that you can submit your comments in writing by email to the Board of Trustees, to the Board at trustees@austinisd.org, or fax them at 414-1486. We ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name, for example, Mr. D. or Ms. A., unless you're addressing the superintendent of schools of the Board, then feel free to call us directly, address us directly. The district is a local governmental body charged with serving the educational needs of the students, and board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. All regular board meetings are televised and rebroadcast on AISD capable channel 22 over the AISD website. We ask that audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. At this time, the Communication Services provides a Spanish-language translator for audience members who need assistance when addressing trustees or need assistance understanding comments made to trustees during citizens' communication. If you need this service, please speak with the interpreter. Margarita Rubalcaba Ordones, communications specialist, will now repeat this message in Spanish.
Buenas noches Mesa Directiva, Presidente Torres, Superintendent Takar Starfen, soy Margarita Rubalcaba Ordones, y soy intérprete del distrito. Mi compañera Cris Sol y yo estamos aquí para ofrecer servicios de interpretación al español a las personas que pasen a hacer sus comentarios ante ustedes. Gracias.
Thank you. Okay, first three speakers, Vincent Tovar, Tony Rayner, and Gabino Fernandez Jr.
No idea. October 20th, 2011. It's been a year and a half. Stop playing a game. Stop playing the game. Get rid of it. It can't get property. It tried at St. James Episcopal Church. I want to make sure we know this. It tried to get property at St. James Episcopal Church and got voted out because it's ugly, it's divisive, and it's toxic. No. You don't know the ugliness if you're not on Facebook, reading the comments posted by some community leaders. It's ugly. Kids are getting kicked out for disciplinary problems. One's going to Go Valley and self-reporting that he had one more chance. He had one more chance, and this is what you asked. Will they get kicked out? Yes, they will. And one's at Go Valley right now, self-reporting that he was kicked out for disciplinary issues. No idea. They have seven administrators. Seven. They have four grade levels, seven administrators. So we're probably going to hear that kids are reading two grade levels above where they should be. Sure, isn't that like, aren't there kids like that at every school? Seven administrators. What would happen if all of our vertical team schools had seven administrators? It's interesting to note that they don't have STAR tomorrow, like all the elementary schools and middle schools have to prepare for STAR, but IDEA got to pick and choose what grade levels they have and what grade levels they don't have. Wouldn't that be nice? So what are we thinking about when we're talking about the future of Allen? What are we thinking about when we're talking about the future of Allen? It'd be nice to have more time to plan for it if we weren't so busy still fighting and politicking and playing the game when it comes to the future of Eastside. What could happen at Allen? There's a pre-K Allen principal that's a non-IDIA pre-K at Allen right now. Her name is Yolanda Cappuccino. Why can't those pre-Kers stay? Extend kindergarten, grow another pre-K. Let's talk about solid existing initiatives that were, the city is all in support of, if it's dual language, fine arts, how about that, pre-K through eight at Allen? Start it slow. Maybe get some of these people that were like it at Allen before. If it was the library, people who needed offices. If it was the parent support specialist office that needed offices. If there's other, if there's IT people that need offices, get them at Allen. Let's make sure that we're really thinking it through. The boys' school, ALC, why would we pay $20 million when we have Allen, which used to be a middle school? Let's think it through. And don't flood, don't flood the RFP evaluation committee with central administrators. Let's make it balanced. Let's make it fair. Let's make sure that the information that's going out is authentic, it's honest, and we're not playing a game. We're not playing a game. We shouldn't, this shouldn't be happening the way it is. This is politics. This is not about my daughter, who could possibly be in the vertical team for 11 more years, when we don't know if other people that work in this district are going to be in here for 11 more years. So why can't we think of my daughter, who hopefully will be? Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Rayner, Gabino Fernandez Jr., Larry Amaro. Tony Rayner? Okay. Gabino Fernandez Jr., Larry Amaro, and Lark Intackett.
Good evening, members of the Board. Mr. President, I would like for my comments to be made part of the record. Thank you. My name is Gabino Fernandez, and I'm speaking to you as LULAC District 12 Director, and I'm coming to you once again to inform you of our concern in the community of the proposal to close Allen. Allen is an academic institution in our community. If you were to close Allen, we'll be going, we would be taking steps backward in academic achievements that we have made. Allen is an institution that, over this weekend, is also an issue that is very silent coming from this Board. Many folks are not aware that that is a proposal to shut down Allen. Many parents that learned that you canceled the contract with IDEA are anticipating and looking forward to being told they're going to be going to Allen next year. And according to what I've read, that's not, that's not the case. One of the things grandmother mentioned to me said, "My son's in the penitentiary. I'm taking care of three kids. What am I going to do? Where is my child going to go if you close Allen?" We have many of these cases in our community. We don't have parents like other affluent communities where they can share the cost to make up for those deficiencies. We have situations in our community, economic situations in our community, that would make it a hardship for our children and our community. To close an academic institution in the barrio today would be setting us backwards academically instead of us moving forward. We have been talking to some of the communities. We will be putting out something. I wish we were as powerful as the Chamber of Commerce and say, "You know, if you do X, Y, and Z, we'll support the bond." But unfortunately, we're not. But I'll tell you one thing, if you close Allen, we will not be supporting the bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Amaro, Lark Intackett, Laurie Barzano.
Good evening, President Torres, the Board, and Ms. Starfen. We're at a very serious time because I know that, well, first of all, let me, let me backtrack. Let me thank the 08 Board for saving Johnston. Let me thank the 11 Board for bringing IDEA to fix a problem that we've had. Go Valley Elementary School had been the lowest-rated elementary school, the whole city, the whole AISD, for 10 years. This was an area we had to fix, and bringing IDEA was the solution. But this Board, 2012-2013 Board, and I'm not talking to all of you, you know who I'm talking to, those five members that did away with IDEA contract, those people, you did away with our plan. You did away with our solution. Now you've put us in jeopardy of the Johnston High School that we all dearly love, all of East Austin, our only high school in District 2. You've put us in jeopardy of the Commissioner closing the school, and that's something that we can't stand for. You're to be held accountable for doing that. So just think about that. Before the Commissioner closes the school, you have the power to, this is a teaching moment, tell the kids that you made a mistake, that you can go back and correct it. We tell our kids that. If you make a mistake, fix it. So you can fix it. Go back, get that contract back. I don't care what these people, none of these people right here in front of you, none of these, everyone to Allen or to Johnston High School, none of them. And we have that opportunity to get Johnston back. Thank you.
Thank you. Lark Intackett, Laurie Barzano, Steve Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Trustees, and Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak. I'm Lark Intackett. I'm the Executive Director of IDEA Public Schools here in Austin, here tonight to represent our families, our staff, and our students, many who have spoken to you during the last several meetings. IDEA's Board, faculty, and staff are absolutely committed to the students and families in central Texas. We'll be in this community for years to come and have a proven track record of success around the state. We want to build upon that success here. Our top priorities are the students we serve, and ensuring that they receive a high-quality education in a positive learning environment. We know that a great cradle to college education provides children with the best success in life or the opportunity for success in life. They deserve that, and we're committed to providing that education for our students here. I want to thank you for your consideration of our request to lease the Allen building for the 1314 school year. It would really go a long way to ensure a smooth transition for our students and families into a more permanent facility. It would allow us to minimize the disruptions and to continue to offer a familiar learning environment. However, if you decide not to extend the lease, we will find another solution that works for our students and families. That has been our goal from the outset of these discussions. If you decide not to lease IDEA the facility for an additional year, even when that building would remain vacant or underutilized, we just respectfully request that you explain your decision in a way that we can share with our parents and staff so that they can clearly understand your rationale. So with that, I want to thank you again for your time and considering the request of our parents and staff.
Thank you. Laurie Barzano, Steve Swanson, Megan Buchanan.
I have coffee.
If you'll just give it to our, the Board Secretary, the executive assistant to the Board, excuse me. We've recently had a name change.
Good evening, Trustees, administrators, parents, community members, and guests. My name is Laurie Barzano. I'm an AISD parent, taxpayer, and Chair of the Coalition to Strengthen Austin Urban Schools. For over three years, the Coalition has come before you with the repeated request that AISD implement authentic, transparent, uniform, inclusive, participatory, community-based process with a reasonable timeframe for making decisions such as closing a school or repurposing a campus. We are not alone in wanting this process as the district's decision-making protocol. Tonight, I stand here to present you with a letter requesting the district implement such a process and establishing the committee to review responses to the requests for proposals AISD issued regarding Eastside Memorial High School. On behalf of Coalition S.A.S., the Eastside Memorial High School Student Council, Pride of the Eastside, LULAC District 7, PAWS, Panthers Action Workshop, and Education Austin, we formally request that AISD implement such a community-based process in considering options and making decisions affecting the future of Eastside Memorial High School. The parents, students, teachers, and community members of Eastside Memorial want what all of us legitimately and rightfully want, an authentic voice in the decision-making process for our schools. As long as I have a second left, I'll add to this a little off the script. I do find it disheartening that you would be considering off the record here, suddenly slipping into the process, that IDEA would get a second bite at the apple. That's just extremely disconcerting to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Swanson, Megan Buchanan, Drew Sheverly.
Good evenings. Steve Swanson, I'm here as a citizen and here to talk about transparency and money. Texas school boards are not only responsible for ensuring effective community-based planning, they're also responsible for the effective use of our resources, our community resources, money, time, talent, and facilities. Before spending money on an outside entity to do our or Austin's work on funding, if you have not already done so, ask for the existing documentation of AISD's processes and data to report actual costs, how money is used, the cost analysis formula used to improve the effective use of money at both the campus and district level, and the results and the improvement steps that have been taken by AISD to improve use of our resources. Do not pay for cost analysis and funding formula work until you see and understand what AI has done and is currently doing, including who, when, and where, to ensure the effective use of our community resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Buchanan, Drew Sheverly.
I just wanted to make a quick correction from earlier. Go Valley was recognized in 2010 and 2011, and that was before IDEA came into the district. I wanted to say thank you to AISD admin and others who extended benefits, who had any role in extending benefits, same-sex partners. Every year since I started teaching at Eastside, which was four years ago, I've asked at open enrollment if AISD offers same-sex partner benefits, and the answer has always been no. The answer will finally be yes, and that is awesome, although I don't know how anyone can afford to add a spouse to the plan since the cost, almost a fifth of my take-home pay. But at least now, we're all subjected to the high cost. Student-based funding. I have a couple of questions, and these came up at our last CAC meeting. If funding is based on individual student needs and services and funds are allocated to that student for, if they need an extra tutor or whatever the services they need, can a principal, what is in place to hold the principal accountable to making sure that the funding goes with those services for that student, and they don't work the numbers to use that to pay for whatever? I'm sure there's something in place, but I couldn't find it. Also, if a student transfers from a school, does that budget get cut at the point that that student transfers? Or does the money, if there was a tutor hired for that student, is that tutor, and that tutor is working with other students, do they get to stay on throughout the end of the year? I just wonder what is in place to ensure stability with that model. For the RFP, the committee membership looks pretty well-rounded. My only concern is there was only one Eastside staff member or teacher, and I would have liked to see more. So I'm curious if there's a way for that teacher rep to meet with Eastside staffer to get feedback and keep them informed while they're going through the process. Same thing with the student rep, if they're able to meet with other students, kind of as they're going through the process, to say, "Well, this partner's like this, and this partner's like this, and what do y'all think? What can I bring back to the meeting?" I saw that a lot of the meetings have in place a chance for the RFP committee to go into private session to talk, and I was hoping that most of the deliberation or anything could be open to the public. And my last question would be, is there any position that could allow somebody like Connor Grady, Amanda Longtaine, or Tracy Jessie to be a part of the process, not in a political way, but just because they were part of such a great success at Eastside, and maybe they could talk about what worked when they were there, or what they've tried? So, that's all. Thank you.
Drew Sheverly and Tony Rayner.
Hi, good evening, Drew Sheverly at the Austin Chamber. Looking forward to support the AIS bond coming up in May, and been part of, and the Chamber's been part of this process for, what, 15 months, from the committee that decided whether we should recommend to have a bond, which we supported, to the committee that had binders of a very extraordinary size that looked at each one of the campuses. And in walking through campuses myself in the daily job, and it's, it was evident to us that, all things told, that yes, this is a big amount of money, but our Board felt strongly that we needed to back this at our meeting last Thursday, and to fully support both the fundraising and the action to get out the vote in support of the bond election on May 11th. So we just want you to know that we appreciate your leadership on this and the importance of this bond, of the citizenry, and making sure that our students have modern facilities, safe, secure, and up to date. Also, you know, we're pleased to see that the legislature has been moving in the direction of restoring some of the funding cuts that they did in the 2011 session. As you're looking at your upcoming budget, we hope that you'll look at resourcing the strategic plan and resourcing especially those areas that are going to help drive high school graduation rates, college career readiness rates, and direct college enrollment rates. The importance of a post-secondary job as an education has never been more important, and it's something that we're taking to our daily advocacy with the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry I was delayed. Thank you for making room for me. Two quick things. One, I support the breastfeeding initiative. Thank you. And two, I'm straight but not narrow. What a pleasant surprise to see the domestic partners come forward. I'm, wow. There is a community member, you've already heard from him, Mr. Steve Swanson. There are others I could name, Joe Trevino, and so on, that they may not live technically in the Eastside neighborhood, but they're just one of many folks that have given generously of their time at Eastside Memorial these several years. They've been in the school. They've been listening to staff. They've been listening to students and parents. They've been at meetings, supporting us, and suffering with us. I believe that he, for example, Mr. Swanson, is a valid advocate for our school. I think we are blessed to have him speaking up for us, even though he does not live right next door to the school. Perhaps that gives him a fresh perspective, coming in to see the historical misbehavior, the historical misbehavior of AISD and other larger organizations toward East Austin. We're kind of used to it. He comes in and says, "Do you know it's supposed to be this way?" No. Our, our local advocates don't know, so they're not telling us. Mr. Swanson's coming in and sharing these things with us, and I just, I hate to see people badmouthing him because he's not of the neighborhood. As far as I'm concerned, it's a marriage. Okay? He chose this family, and he's doing a very good job of sticking up for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This concludes citizens' communication. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, then we will then move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Mathias?
I'm moving that we approve the consent.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Mr. Snyder?
Yes. Since the Board really hasn't discussed this resolution, I have a question regarding item five, which is the commitment to develop a facility master plan before June 30th of 2014. I was wondering if the administration can fill us in on what the thoughts are in terms of actual timeline and how this is going to get done by that date.
Dr. Starfen?
Mr. President, Trustees of the Board, Trustee Schneider, this is part of the conversation we had with different stakeholder groups, particularly our Austin-area chamber and other chambers, the African-American Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, where there was, in addition to their support, and they certainly raised their support in alignment with our strategic plan and our efforts to indeed complete a facility master plan. The approach to it is going to continue from the work that we've been doing in developing the 10-year timeline, which the Board has seen multiple, multiple times. Depending on the outcome of the bond, that may dramatically shape or change our approach. It also includes areas that we haven't had an opportunity to discuss as much, but they have gone into the early discussions regarding the different recommendations that came out for the, as the Citizens' Bond Advisory Committee shaped the propositions for the bond, but that we still need to have clarity on our direction around boundaries and transfers and under-enrolled schools, over-enrolled schools, and all of these things need to be explicitly laid out with coherent action steps and a plan over the next 10 years, including things like portables and some of our larger issues that need to be mapped out so that we have a clear roadmap for how we're going to address all of our needs around our infrastructure and AISD. So we've had longstanding, longstanding work groups since, y'all know, like probably January 2010, including a superintendent work group that comes together multiple times in every month, and we'll continue that work with the goal of bringing, probably in phases or chunks, part of the facility master plan. Our first big, our first big benchmark, we've already had one meeting to kick off since some of the latest decision-making of the Board regarding the bond, where we should have a big check-in with the Board by December of 2012, I'm sorry, 2013, in preparation for a lead-up to a June facility master plan. So we have smaller benchmark steps along the way, but, but those details until, you know, we had all the formal action on the resolution and anything else, and of course, I think May 10th will give us a huge indicator on which direction we should be going with the facility master plan. So things will either be dramatically accelerated or dramatically, you know, slowed down based on the outcome of that, of that election. So we are, we're kind of, we're continuing the work that we've been doing and continuing a lot of our community meetings around some of the areas of interest, like career and technical education, and some other things that y'all know about that we haven't fully completed this year, and all those things will come together in that plan.
Okay. So based on your reply, it sounds to me like you have a somewhat, and maybe a little crude of a word, but rough timeline in terms of how things are going to be laid out. But I'm very concerned about this particular aspect of this resolution on a number of different fronts. First of all, we had a facility master planning task force at one point that was quite literally walked away from. You did create your advisory group that has been meeting, you've put the materials up in the Board Office, I've been taking a look at on a somewhat regular basis, but it really seems to be more addressed at academic uses. seems to be more addressed at academic uses versus what I think of as a facility master plan. In other words, not only how we're going to use the buildings, but how those buildings actually get taken care of, prioritized, maintained, those kinds of things. You also mentioned the transfer and boundary process from the few meetings of the CBAC that I went to and other meetings I've attended. It's a recurring theme that comes up, that, you know, the difficulty of trying to plan things when you've got a boundary process that is not changed very often and usually under circumstances of only new schools and a transfer policy that is allowing a lot of transfers from different schools. I would personally like to see the board get more involved in this particular aspect of it, and I would suggest that we have discussion about a board-appointed committee that fits in on this in some way. And, you know, I want very much to make sure that if we follow through and do this facility master plan, that we, you know, do it in a way that's going to be acceptable to the community all the way around.
May I add one thing? Give, Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, trustee Schneider, I mean, I attend all of our work group meetings, but just as a reminder, we've had multiple advisory committees, the citizens, CIB PAC, the citizens, help me, you helped us come up with a capital improvement and bond planning committee. We had the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. We still have our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. We have our own longstanding work group, and I just want to remind you that the board approved and has made improvements to our facility master plan framework, and that's actually what we are, you know, following step by step to get to the facility master planning process. And as different things have emerged, like a bond, a scope of a bond, and some of these other big things, as it is presented in the facility master plan, I mean, framework, you can see across the calendar year when the different groups work and why they work and what they're charged to do. So, we have been following that. We have not created a separate process, and all of the, you know, advisory committees and their work has been made, you know, available to the public and the board. So, for what it's worth, we are, even when not asked, we are still constantly reviewing transfers and boundaries and things of that sort to ramp up to, you know, a coherent, comprehensive recommendation to the board for facility planning. But as other things have come, you're right, we haven't done it 110% on some of these approaches, but we do have a lot of good evidence of the use and our efforts from a school-community perspective and all the citizenry that participated in these advisory committees, that they are very aware of what we're up against and some of the community guidance that has been provided to the board about what the community wants to see and does not want to see in facility planning. But you have our commitment to get, we haven't stopped, even after our bond work, everyone is still moving in that direction, and we have many, many community groups, as you know, like the one for the South High School, the one for career and technical education. We continue our work, we'll have budget community meetings coming up soon, so all these things still come together and form that process. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder, just so that I'm clear, you used the term "this" in your explanation. Did this refer to the facility master plan work? Did it refer to the boundary part of it? Because you were talking about it during...
Can you refresh the context for me, please?
Well, you said you wanted the board to be involved in "this." Was the "this" the whole item?
This is the facility master plan process. I mean, I would note that we're talking about a 12- to 14-month time window before...
I understand. I just want to make sure that it's the whole process as opposed to the, you know, because you, and I think accurately stated about the boundary issue that comes up. Wasn't sure if that's what you wanted to be the chair of, or...
I don't want to be the chair of anything, to begin with.
Just want to make sure when I appoint the chair, what that charge will be.
I think that this particular exercise, in referring to how we're going to get the facility master plan out, is something that's going to take a lot more breadth and involvement than simply going through, looking at some of the things that, and not to negate the work that's been done, Dr. Chris Harvin, but to make sure that this is tightly integrated with the way we approach all of our facilities, not just particular academic initiatives or individual schools or sites or that kind of thing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Ms. Moya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Robert, I actually agree with you on some of what you said.
Wait, wait.
Yeah, really. Fan, fan, throw some confetti. Dr. Chris Harvin, I appreciate that we've got, we've given ourselves a deadline here to do all of this. I think that June 30th of 2014 is too soon, simply because from past experience over the last seven years and our work on our facility master plan process previously, we did a lot of great work then, and we continue to do a lot of great work. But given the large, big things that would be involved in doing this right, when we talk about boundaries, when we talk about transfer policy, because all those things are going to play into a complete and comprehensive facility master plan, I really think we need enough time, whatever that enough is, to ensure that we have broad-based community support from across the district. I don't, and given that I don't have all of the information of what your, what the, as Robert said, your rough timeline, I don't have that. But I just feel like we need to devote some additional time, if it's six months, whatever it is. I know we spent a lot of time working on the facility master plan previously, at least a year, and so I don't want to, I don't want to make the same mistakes that may have been made in the past, and I want to make sure that we allow ourselves and our school district community to understand the reasons why we want to make some of the decisions that we want to make or propose, and get broad-based community buy-in, and I'm not sure if we can do that effectively in a year. I'm just not sure. If somebody can make me feel more comfortable with that, I'm willing to entertain it. Thank you.
Did you want to comment, Dr. Chris Harvin, or not?
Well, Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, trustee Moya, I mean, perhaps the officers can talk about this. I mean, we had other stakeholder groups who have committed, brought many even more constrained considerations around, for the district as related to supporting the bond, as some of you may remember. We worked very hard, leading up to those endorsements, to negotiate a later date, pushing it out to June 30th, 2014. I know the, I think the board officers, several of you were there for that post-it meeting to talk about this resolution. The board is at liberty to do whatever it decides, but we do know that for some of the stakeholders related to supporting the bond and committing to fundraising, it took a lot for the board and those groups to come to agreement on this kind of, on the content of this resolution. I know that as an administration, we probably rewrote it 12 times for the various feedback that we received, but it's totally left up to the board, and I know that as different stakeholder groups have taken their board votes to support the bond, they have been using this resolution as guidance for their conversations and support. So, we'll commit to whatever the board wants us to do.
Well, I appreciate that. And however, I do not believe that any association or otherwise has, while they may make a request for an elected body to consider issues that are important to them, I don't believe that any organization should think that they have the right to strong-arm or blackmail a governmental entity into getting what they want. So, you know, I appreciate the resolution. I appreciate that we've given ourselves a timeline to work with. I'm still not convinced that one year or 14 months, like Robert said, is the right amount of time. And so, you know, I understand that there were apparently some folks that took this draft document and made some decisions based on it, but, you know, we still have not voted on it. And so, and as far as the negotiations, I don't know who was involved in it, I certainly was not. So, you know, I don't know what took place. All I know is what's sitting here. And I am not convinced that a 14-month window, in order to get all the heavy lifting done that we need to do, in order to be, in order for our entire district to be happy and comfortable, well, maybe not happy, but comfortable, and to get some, get buy-in from our community is, you know, I just don't think this is enough time. But, you know, the will of the board will prevail, but I just, I just don't think that that's enough time. Thanks.
Dr. Mathias?
I would simply like to take this opportunity to be able to thank all of our friends at the chamber for their support. When we received the email on Thursday expressing the support for this bond election, I suspect many of us shared the same feelings of gratitude, of deep, deep gratitude to the chamber for their trust, for their confidence in us, and so would simply want all of our friends of the chamber to know our gratitude, not only for their support, but also for helping to draw our attention as a district to various challenges, various needs that we have, the master facility plan being one of them. So, I would love to echo trustee Schneider's comments with respect to the master facility plan, and if there's any work that we as trustees could be doing to address boundary issues and transfer issues, these are things that seem to come up at each of our meetings. I would be happy to see us do that. So, this is my question. I'm somewhat confused now after having heard our superintendent, so maybe there's, if we as a board could maybe explain why it is that we have this resolution, what I'm hearing is that there were certain constraints to support, but on the other hand, I'm hearing that the chamber, for which we are all thankful, has unconditionally supported what it is that we're doing. So, I'm wondering if this was drafted for that reason, obviously it seems to be a moot point, so maybe someone could help us to understand if this resolution is indeed needed.
First of all, the answer is yes. A resolution is needed, and every bond that we've had, we've had a resolution, and in fact, this resolution, as those that were at the officers' meeting when it was presented to the officers noted, this resolution was actually passed the last bond, the same night that the bond was, election was called. And it's really done in the spirit for at least the first three items that say, if we're going to have a bond, that the board is committing to ensure that, because when you think of it, Dr. Mathias, and really all board members, just because you have a bond doesn't mean that the board is committing to spend the money exactly the way the money was voted on, but you want that commitment to be made very clear. It's understood that that's the case. And so, this resolution says that the bond money will be spent exactly on the items that it was approved for, that it will be, that there'll be an oversight committee made up of citizens to ensure that that actually occurs. In other words, it's not just us giving our word that this is going to occur, it's actually saying that we will have a citizens oversight committee that will make sure that money is spent the way it's supposed to, that will stay within budget, and will attempt to stay within the timelines for each of the projects. The other one, these other items that have been, and those are sort of the first three items, and that has been done before, and that has been done early in the process, even earlier than we're doing now, about a month earlier. The last two items, the administration brought to us, one, and I think our chief financial officer has mentioned to us the fact that we need to make sure, we've had several discussions that our chief financial officers told us about, the fact that as we move forward, we need to be very careful about engaging in any activities, given the funding, that we are not sure, as we move out in years, how the legislature is going to be treating us, and so we need to be mindful of that. And this really, the first one, is to ensure that we are indeed able to operate schools before, while we have enough money, and not open schools that we may not have enough money to open. So, I think that's just simply good financial management, and this is simply a statement of that fact. The last one, and I guess I'm a little surprised, Mr. Snyder was at the same meeting, he offered no comment on this particular item, but I'm a little surprised, not by that, but by the fact that this is something that I know has been a desire of Mr. Snyder, at least the way, the things that you said you want this board to work on. And so, I would think the particular item, once again, to answer your question, is indeed something that we have been talking about as a board to ensure, and some of us have been supportive, Mr. Snyder being one, Ms. Moya now indicating her support for. And so, this is simply articulating those items in a resolution that, as we have heard from other stakeholders in the community, are items of importance to our stakeholders, just as some of these items are. So, do we, have we done this before? Yes. Have we done it earlier, timing-wise? Absolutely. The record shows that three of these items are verbatim what they were before, and the last two items have been, are submitted to this board during this session. So, I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, I appreciate the clarification, especially for the sake of our viewing public. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Nohosa?
Thank you. Trustee Moya, I take seriously your concern about the timeframe, given your prior experience with this work. So, I was wondering whether you have a proposed amendment to the resolution that you would feel better about supporting?
I did not come prepared with an amendment to the resolution. I didn't know that we would even entertain adjusting the resolution tonight, because I did not know, you know, how, where the rest of the board members, you know, felt on this, or how the rest of the board members felt on this, and if I was the Lone Ranger, I wasn't going to say a whole lot, other than to voice my concern. So, you know, if it's the will of the board to make a change or an amendment, you know, I'm happy to put something together. I would think at least an additional six months should allow, make, you know, could help and allow us some time, but I don't know. I mean, I think it would, it would take some conversation, but, so I appreciate you saying that. I just wonder if these particular two items should just be part of the way we do our work, as opposed to tying it specifically to this bond. I feel like it should be part of, you know, our list of things that we're planning on doing. I don't know if it's, because these are things that are, you know, considerations and ways of doing business that we should always be doing. So, but, so to answer your question, no, I'm not, I did not come prepared, and so, but I'm happy to, you know, have a conversation, and maybe we can come up with something, or maybe we should consider removing them from the resolution and making them part of our standard game plan as a board.
Ms. Teich and then Ms. Parkesal.
I appreciate, trustee Moya, your concern about the time and the involvement of the community. I'm a little concerned, going back to trustee Schneider's remarks about, and I think your question was just basically, what's the timeline, correct? Okay. So, I'm a little concerned about that. I know that this is, this has been an important piece of business for quite a while, and I know it's very complicated. We have a very complicated district, a lot of moving parts, so I don't know, and I do want the community involved in making decisions about, and having their input into all of this, and I appreciate the community's continued willingness to do that, to participate in these procedures. My... My, I think my concern, my reservation in moving the June 30th date is that it could possibly slow down, I'm sorry, allergies are resurfacing, possibly slow down some momentum that's going on in the district with the superintendent's group, with other citizen groups that are already in process of working towards this. That's my only concern about extending that deadline, and I just wanted to offer that.
Ms. Parksdale.
Thank you. I want to second trustee Mathias's comments on appreciation for the chamber, for supporting, or chambers, for supporting the bond. I have a question, just for clarification. For the resolution, for number five, or let's just say for a facility master plan, does that mean that by the deadline cited in the resolution, this board would have solved in a snapshot way, for right now, with, you know, with a ratified plan, boundaries, transfers, and underutilized buildings in 14 months?
Not necessarily. It depends on how you define the plan. In other words, if the plan is to, and let me just say, so, not necessarily. Because I think what you're saying is, all of a sudden, we've got all the boundaries redone and everything else. That's not the intent here.
Okay.
So, I just want to clarify that part of it.
Well, seeking clarification on the intent, what is the expected deliverable on this date?
It would be, you know, like, for instance, what Mr. Snyder, let me give you an example. You know, Mr. Snyder and I, I think, are in agreement in this, and to say, do we raise schools? Do we raise?
I agree with you, too.
Do we raise schools, or do we continue to add on as a Band-Aid? And if we do, if we say, no, let's not continue to add on, let's tear them down and rebuild, okay? The specific criteria as to how you would do that, I wouldn't expect to be absolutely laid out, but it would, but this would say, we are going to develop that. In other words, if at the end of the year, you say, this is really going to take a much longer process to meet with some construction professionals, to see what other people have done, some things like that, to where the plan is really helping us to guide us in that thinking, then this plan would say, we're going to need another four months to do that. So, it really depends on how you, you know, where you want to set that boundary, if you will, for this particular activity. And what I was going to suggest, but, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn here, is what I would suggest is that we use this as a milestone, and that as part of the planning process, that we identify which of those items that are going to take longer because of, you know, some research or activity that we engage in, in this planning process, that tells us, you can't identify all of the items within the timeframe that you've got identified. But you at least have a game plan, if you will, that will tell you how you're going to go about doing that, and why it is that you need either more time or more information in order to develop criteria that you're going to use. But I see this as helping to establish, you know, we need to have some criteria for this area, like with the bricks and mortar part of it. The boundaries is probably going to be something that, in my opinion, is going to take longer, simply because you need to have more input from the community, and we need, we don't know exactly how we're going to do that. We're also, are looking at some work with a company that has volunteered to help us, but we don't know what their timeframe would be like to work within this. But we know that's something we want to try to participate in, or to have them participate with us in. So, I guess what I would, what I would want to amend this is to say that at this point in time, there will be a report that will be issued, and if there are other items that need more time, and I think there will be, that we then identify which of those items we need to have more time on, and what kind of timeframe. Because by then, we'll be more informed as to what the process is going to take, and what specific items are going to take more time.
Okay. I agree with you, too, Robert. I just want to say that, but I really don't. I really don't. I think that almost answers my question. I'll continue listening and see if I have any follow-up. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis.
I just wanted to say, I actually very much appreciate having a deadline. I've watched the administration work with the calendar committee, and once that something is put as a deadline, the timelines are developed, the planning is put into place. And I very much appreciate having a time to shoot for and starting to work through that in the calendar, so.
Thank you. Ms. Moya.
Well, thanks. As I stated before, I'm glad we gave ourselves a deadline. We need to have those. But trustee Mathias, I appreciate what you said about the email that we received last week, the unconditional support of the chamber. But please remember that that is not the first email we received from the chamber. The other one came a couple of weeks back, totally different language, and totally different, totally different tone. So, just to make that clarification, which is the reason for my comments, and I will stick to those comments, especially as they relate to the previous first email we received. Second of all, if President Torres, if what you described right now, just now, is a little different from what our facility master plan was last time. It wasn't as much of, you know, this overarching guidance and some philosophical views and opinions and identification of things that are going to need more study, et cetera. If that is what is meant by this, that's fabulous. I think we probably need to change the name so that it doesn't confuse anybody, because it could confuse someone, because I certainly was. Because my expectation of this was something along the lines of what we did a couple of years ago, that, you know, got a lot of pushback from community members who weren't quite sure, you know, that everything had been vetted well. So, if what we're talking about is something like you have described, then my recommendation is, would be that we change the name so that the two are not confused. Do I have an idea for that? Just in case you're going to ask. I don't yet, but I will continue to listen and come up with something. I don't know what we would call it, because I'm not sure that it's an actual plan, as much of it's, as it's some type of guiding something, you know? And I'm lost for words today, surprise, surprise. But I just think that if we do that, I don't want us to confuse two things that are actually not the same, at least from what you've just described.
Ms. Tyson.
Just for, I'm sorry, just for clarification.
Your mic's not on. Thank you.
I think what I heard you say is, it sounded like you wanted to amend this section five to include some kind of a report that would be connected to the facility master plan, and that, so I agree with trustee Moya. I think we need to be really clear between plan and report, and make sure that that verbiage is in there. So, and I don't know how to put all that together right now. So, I'm just saying that, you know, I think, be sure that the report's not confused with the plan when we amend that language.
Understand.
Is that okay?
Understand, absolutely. Ms. Inohosa.
So, President Torres, what I heard you describe, in my mind, is more of a framework as opposed to a plan. We can't call that. Okay, so.
But you're right, in the sense that it would allow us the flexibility to take more time on those items, that as we get into this process, we realize we really are going to need more time, and here's why. You know, I don't think any of our stakeholders would want us to put an artificial timeline, because, you know, Ms. Moya, throughout six months. What's magical about six months? Absolutely not. Nothing. You know, we could all sit around here and guess what that would be, but that's exactly what it would be, is a guess. I think what's more important is that we sort of say, okay, at this point in time, we're going to have a report that is the progress report on the activity, whatever we're going to call this, and Ms. Tyson said, you know, whatever that activity is, we're going to have a report that says, this is what we've accomplished. You know, one of the things that this doesn't spell is the exact charge. You know, what are the items that are going to be captured within this activity, and which items are not? I think that's one of the first things that we'd want to do after the May 11th, is to determine exactly what is that scope of work that we're talking about, what will be included and what will not be included. And then, begin to develop a timeline for each of those items, and then at the end of a year, see where we are, you know, at June 30th. Where are we? And we have this progress report that we talked about. And those items that are finished, or at a point that, you know, we feel they're finished, would be approved, and those items that need more time, we would extend the timeframe for that. But I agree. I think we need to have, and any date, I'm just going to say, any date that any of us try to pick right now is going to be a guess. So, I suggest that in the spirit of saying, we have something we're going to try to shoot for, but with a flexibility to allow us to identify those items that we know are going to take longer as we get into this process. Does that answer your question, Ms.?
Yes.
Captain Oll. Ms. Moya.
Mr. President, would this actually, given Ms. Inohosa's comment about framework, would this actually be something that we would add to the existing framework, as some type of guiding principles, or some kind of, you know, preamble? I mean, something that would maybe become part of an introduction to, or the current facility master plan framework, in order to enhance that and make it better? Because if it is, I mean, I can understand where we would, you know, where someone would think that it was a framework. But I'm trying to figure out a place where it would go, so that it would, it would live on, instead of just being part of a resolution for this particular bond. I'm just trying to find a place for it, and.
Other than being in Mr. Fryer's shop, I wouldn't want to, right now, specify to him, it shall be part of XYZ. What I'd rather do is, with all the other activities he's got, his boundary planning task force, the, you know, you've got your, you have a CBAC that starts off a bond, all of those different activities that we have related to facilities and use of facilities, I'd rather leave that open, once again, until we get into it and say, this is where it's actually going to fit. But I think it would be one of the many activities that Mr. Fryer engages in as part of the person responsible for all of those activities within the district.
Okay, but I, okay, but I still think we need to fix the language here somehow, you know? And because, you know, if I had not been sitting here for the last seven years, and I was sitting out there, I would read facility master plan and immediately associate it with the previous process by the same name. So, I would like for us to change that, because I don't believe that's, based on how this has been described, I don't believe that that's what this is.
Mr. Snyder.
I was going to point out that our stack of things to discuss at some point is still the facility master plan, that, you know, I know, at least I have a concern that it's somewhat of a misnomer, that we really don't have a facility master plan, although we have a facility master planning process. So, it would be an appropriate time, you know, when we actually do get to that point, to discuss it, to discuss what all we're going to include in this, and kind of leave it as right here. I mean, I, I'm personally comfortable with the date, because, you know, the work that was done before, I mean, the facilities haven't gotten any younger, and, I mean, they're all still out there about the same shape they were. So, we have at least a fairly good idea of what those look like. It's going to be some of the other things that are going to take a little bit more time and discussion. So, my suggestion would be just to leave it like it is for now, and when we get to the part about discussing the facility master plan process, we can flesh out exactly what we want to call this when it goes public, and get the community involved or anything else, and what the charge of that particular group will be.
So, here you know further. Ms. Bradley.
Just a little confusion on my part, because I was listening to trustee Parksdale, and I think she was pretty much getting at what my concern was, but I'm not particularly sure if I heard her concern particularly answered. So, can you kind of help me with that a little bit? I mean, because we're talking about over 100 and some odd facilities that should have, that there should be some definition about 2016, 2017, that's a lot of facilities, a plan or remedies to address under enrollment, you know, by 2014. Would you not, neither here nor there with the dates, but that's a lot of facilities. And I heard you speak of your framework, and it could be this, or it could be that. But when you look in at section five, it does not say it could be this, or it could be that. It's pretty specific. So, I guess I'm with Lori on the language. And I do agree with the board being involved with this process, but this is pretty specific.
Well, I guess I'm going to say, once again, because this doesn't lay out all the specifics, the intent here is not to tie us down to the exact, this will be done this month, this will be done at a particular point in time. But once again, I guess the way I interpret this is that one of the very first things that we're going to have to do is exactly what Mr. Snyder said, is we're going to have to have a meeting to identify what is covered in the charge of this, what are the specific items that, as you said, I use the term framework, what are we going to include in that framework, if you will? What are those items that we're going to consider part of this plan? And then, the second part, as I tried to identify to Ms. Parksdale, is I don't think all of those are going to be able to be accomplished by June 30th. I think some of them, because we have other things going on in the district, are going to take a little bit longer, and to expect all of them are going to be able to be neatly tied up by next June 30th, I think is unrealistic. But I do think having a progress report that tells us, here's how much time, how much more time we're going to need on this particular issue, or that particular issue, is really the spirit of what I think the stakeholders that have spoken with me about this item are really wanting, is something that says that at some point in the future, and once again, I would argue, is six months more enough? I don't know. You know, I'd like to be able to study this a little bit, to be able to determine, how much time do we really need? And allow us, that progress report, to tell us, how much more time are we going to need, and for what specific items are we going to need? And what have we actually included in the definition of this facility master plan, is what I would say.
Ms. Tyson.
Could I offer some language that?
Please.
In the second sentence?
Please.
The facility master plan shall include, but not be limited to, specific plans? Would that work? And that would incorporate all?
Sure.
What you're talking about, about possibilities, and the fact that we can't predict a lot of things? Is that okay?
Absolutely. You want to?
Sorry, turned it off again. Do I need to make a specific motion of that effect?
If you would, so that we can help.
Like an amendment to the motion? Okay. So, I would, I would offer this amendment, that we change the language of sentence number two, under section five, the facility master plan shall include, but not be limited to, put commas in front of it at the end, specific plans and or remedies to address under enrollment within the district, et cetera, keeping the rest of that sentence the same. Does that work? Okay.
So, there's a motion to amend. Is there a second? Mr. Snyder, second? Ms. Moya.
Is it discussion?
Yes.
Yes, good. I still want us to do something about the term facility master plan. If we can call it facility master plan report, facility master plan guiding principles, facility master plan something, other than facility master plan. And I, you know, help y'all, because, to come up with some other terminology, because I'm not sure what it needs to be. Like I said, I wasn't in the discussions with any stakeholders on this. So, you know, but I do appreciate, Vince, your clarification on what this means, because this helps me a great deal in having, you know, some comfort in this, instead of having heartburn over it. So, but I do think that we would be doing ourselves a disservice by leaving it called facility master plan.
Ms. Parksdale.
Thank you. I'm trying to identify where the tension is here in our discussion, and I think that the superintendent was clear that some stakeholders who have now offering support for the bond are, seem to be seeking some sort of commitment or covenant with the board, between the board and voters, that will best steward and optimize the district's dollars and -- dollars and resources. So there's that. It doesn't sound like anyone on the board disagrees with that. We're doing it, you know, as quickly as we can. From my perspective, I think the difficulty that I have, because I see that, or I've seen that superintendent administrations work in this area, is that the technical parts of this can't be done. But in moving with this, how this board operates, I think that the tension is in wanting to make sure that plans are done, things are out there, and we have optimal time for community input. So I want to reassure any stakeholders who might be listening that I'm not sensing any lack of willingness on the part of this board to get this work done and to fulfill that covenant between the board and the voters who may support the bond to optimize use of district resources. But this is so loaded and provocative, an issue to kind of bring to the community, that we need to make sure that we have enough time to have people be fully informed and either, as Trustee Moya said, if not supporting, then comfortable with the process that we followed. So is that what you assess as well?
Absolutely. I couldn't have said it better.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Moya, can we, either to amend, we have a motion on the floor, which we either want to vote on or not. But if I can ask you to suggest some additional words to add into that, I guess, the first sentence in the sense of the development of Facility Master Plan Guiding Principles on or before June 30th, or by June 30th or as soon thereafter as possible?
That works for me. So you want me to say that?
Well, let's vote on the first modification. And then if you want to write something down, so that I can ask you to make an amendment with that, and then we'll vote on that one.
Okay.
Ms. Owens.
I'm just not sure what the added language is doing, because it's not limiting us anyway. So Facility Master Plan shall include automatically does not limit us. So I'm not sure what the additional language is bringing to the table.
Okay.
I can remove my amendment to the amendment.
Amendment to the.
Okay. Let's vote that amendment down, then. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, so that amendment fails. So let's now take Ms. Moya, if I can ask you.
So.
It was unanimous.
So for Section 5, the board supports the district's development of a Facility Master Plan Guiding Principle. I still want to say report, you've got me stuck on report. Okay. Guiding Principles on or before June 30th, 2014. You said or as soon thereafter. We're going to say on or before. Doesn't that satisfy? Or do we need to say, or do we need to say, on or before?
I would put by June 30th or as soon thereafter.
Okay, by June 30th, 2014, or as soon thereafter.
As.
As soon as, as soon as possible thereafter.
Okay, so you want to cast that in the form of a motion, please?
Okay, hang on, let me write it all down. Okay, here we go. I move to amend the resolution on item Section 5 to read, the board supports the district's development of a Facility Master Plan Guiding Principles by June 30th, 2014, or as soon as possible thereafter. Period.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Tyce, I'm sorry.
Okay, so upon reflection, did you, when you all, and I'm not privy to all of the discussions that went on before you started this process of the Facility Master Plan. So are there guiding principles already that you have that guide this Facility Master Plan, that the superintendent's crew's been working on, that the CBIC, the CBAC, the CBOC, have they all had guiding principles to work on?
They have, we have, that culminated in a framework.
Okay, so that's the framework. So that's the guiding principles, right?
Well, it's a framework. It's a little different than guiding principles in that.
It has steps, things have to, sorry. Okay. So there's some of the major, there are no major philosophies expressed in that, in that framework? Is that what we're saying? No guiding philosophies?
Yes, but a philosophy and, I guess, what I think we're talking about in terms of guiding principles is how we will actually make those decisions, whereas the framework already says, this is what's going to, this is the process that will be followed.
Okay, so you didn't have the philosophies before you did the framework?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, so I see what you're saying.
Okay, any other questions, discussions?
For my sake, what is the language that you're using? The board supports the district's development of master, facility, Master Plan Guiding Principles by June 30th, 2014, or as soon as possible thereafter?
Yes.
Is that the motion as I hear it? Okay.
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Do we dare ask if that will be amenable to those who have concerns outside of this board?
I really think this is something that the board needs to feel comfortable with. And either we, as a board, are comfortable with it or not. But I think the input that we've received, and once again, as I think Ms. Barksdale said, as eloquently as possible, the spirit of this board is really to look toward the development of this type of activity and to engage in it as soon as we possibly can. So I think this tries to put into words that spirit of this board.
Ms. Barksdale.
So there could be some of these big issues ticked off and sort of in the can by the time we get to this point.
Sure.
Which I think would be the hope. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Snyder.
I just want to say that, you know, when I brought this up, I mean, the only thing I'm looking for is a real commitment to get this done. And Ms. Moya, I see your point about the particular label, but it's a label. I mean, you know, we could call it something else, and it's still going to arise the same issues. I mean, the only thing I want is a commitment to get it done. And, you know, principles is a little bit different from a commitment to do something. But, you know, as long as we're committed to actually getting a plan done, I mean, I don't care what we call it. You know, we could call it the Facility Utilization Plan, or Efficiency Plan, or some combination of that. But, I mean, you know, I really want a plan in place by a committed date to get something done. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so, Robert, what you're describing.
Ms. Moya.
I'm sorry. May I have the turn? Robert, what I'm hearing you say is something different from what Vince said. And what you're describing is what caused me to raise my hand in the first place, because that's what I thought we were talking about. And if we were giving ourselves 14 months, I wasn't sure that we could actually do the best possible job of engaging the community in vetting everything as best as possible, or better, in a 14-month timeframe. I agree that we need to have a Facilities Master Plan. And I think, I'm not, I can't speak for everyone on the board, but I'm getting the sense that there is a commitment to do that, in addition from the administration. But I also know that if we could call things the same thing and they mean different things, it's very confusing. And I don't want the community to be confused. And I don't want people to think that we said we're going to do this, but we're doing that. And I want us to be very, very specific, plain, and very understandable to everyone who's looking at what we're doing, so that there's not any confusion and not any belief of any type of misrepresentation or not doing what we said we were going to do.
Mr. Snyder.
Ms. Moya, I would point out that it says, development of a plan. I mean, that's what it says. I mean, by this date, we're going to have a plan that we're going to have.
I know, but what you see as a plan doesn't sound to me like what Vince said. So that's where, that's what I was trying to get a resolution on and get an understanding on, so I would know how I was going to vote. And I still think you guys are talking about two different things.
I don't, I don't think so. I think Mr. Snyder is saying that whatever you want to call it is whatever you want to call it. And I've tried to describe or include what I think is in it, but I'm not necessarily calling it anything at this point in time, so that there isn't a connotation associated with it that some people already have that, you know, cast it as a thing that it may or may not be.
Right. And I just don't want it to be limited to guiding principles of, you know, we're going to talk about this, this, and this, because that doesn't do what I think needs to be.
Right. Okay, there's a motion and a second to modify the language in Section 5. All those in favor of the modification of the language as specified by Ms. Moya, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes eight, one. Okay. At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the modified language for Section 5 of the bond resolution. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes nine, zero. Okay. We are now ready for the next item on the agenda, which is the board dialogue. And at this point in time, this concludes the televised portion of our meeting. And we will now recess for a little bit to allow set change. Thank you very much to our viewing studio audience.